Good evening. We are returning from executive session at 7:08. We ran a little bit over and had some technical challenges and ready to go. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we will start off with public comment, and I believe we have two call-ins. Ms. Picard?
Yes, and I did not call these folks in advance, so if you are at home watching, I am calling you from the Google Meet. It will have a random Google assigned phone number, so please pick up, and we will welcome you to the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your public comment, and then we'll ask you to leave the meeting. So let's see what happens. Bill assures me I will hear ringing. If anybody hears ringing, please tell me. It says it's connected.
Hello?
If the caller is connected, I do not hear them, Bill. It looks like the caller has picked up.
I hear you, but I don't know who you are.
Hello caller, I cannot hear you. Bill, do you have any advice on this?
Who is this?
I can see that you're speaking caller. Whoop, you hung up caller. So I can either call again here, or I can call there. Call here?
Yeah.
Well, I think Bill's coming in, so if you're...
We couldn't hear anything.
Could you hear the caller?
Yeah.
We could not.
Okay, if you're still watching caller? Caller, your name is Jenny, I'm so sorry. Jenny, if you're still watching. Bill is, the speaker was not giving your voice in here, but they were hearing it in the booth, so we might be able to get it in the room, and if not, we're going to call you from the school phone number. Thank you for your patience, and I'll give you some hold music now. Can I do it?
Should be able to.
Okay. Here we go, Jenny. These things used to make me really nervous, now I'm just like, oh, mistakes are made.
That's right. That's how we all learn.
Hi, is this Jenny?
It is.
Jenny, thank you for being patient and taking our call again. This is Helen Picard with the North Andover School Committee, and you have two minutes to make your public comment, please.
Oh, I don't want to make a public comment.
Jenny, you didn't want to make a public comment for the North Andover School Committee?
No, I, when I wanted, I thought, this is about the school starting before or after Labor Day, right?
Yeah, go ahead, you can make a comment on that.
Oh, boy. Uh, this caught me off guard, I'm so sorry. I just, I'm all for the kids going back after Labor Day.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, I hope you have a great night, and thanks for, thanks for calling, I appreciate it so much.
You're very kind, thank you Jenny, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, this is fun. Poor Jenny, got caught off-guard. She did a great job.
She did a great job.
I want to know if I have a future in radio as a producer.
I think you do.
I think you do, Helen. Calling over now?
Now just sing us some commercials.
All right, we are calling Barbara. It does not yet say it's connected. I don't hear the ring, does anybody hear the ring?
... Voice message system, six, one, seven, two.
Okay, so we got Barbara's message machine, so we won't be calling back, but Barbara, if you want to send something in email, we'll be happy to read that, and we will take it into consideration when we have deliberations. And you're welcome to come to the next meeting. Thank you very much. Sorry about the technical difficulties, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Picard, thank you for all your work, that was challenging and you did great. Is there a public comment in the room? Okay. We will move on to consent agenda, we have minutes from January 19, 2020.
I'll need to approve the minutes as presented in the packet for January 19, 2020. How's second?
I would offer a friendly amendment to the motion. I know that there were some typos that were fixed between the time the packet was printed and what's currently linked to the agenda, so my friendly amendment would be that we're approving the minutes as linked to the agenda rather than printed in the packet.
Do we have an idea what those changes were?
Dr. Gilligan's name was spelled incorrectly, there were some spacing issues, the discussion of the subcommittee for special ed review was named as a first read rather than a discussion.
So you're asking me to accept the friendly amendment? Are you asking me to accept the friendly amendment?
I think that's how it works.
Okay. I will accept the friendly amendment.
And then we don't have to move again.
All right, so now it's discussion.
Is there further discussion? Okay, let's vote then. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
And I will vote yes, so we are four to one. Okay, moving on to our favorite part of the evening, student representative report.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, it's good to see you again. For those of you I'm just meeting, my name is Nora Elkhadiji, I'm a senior at NOS, and I don't have much to talk about since we last met, but I will say that our first semester has ended, so finals are over, grades are in, and we've started a few new classes for the most part. I hear the transition is going pretty smoothly. Also, today, the Model UN Club is having a fundraiser at Panera until eight o'clock, so try to get in, 20% of the profits go towards the club. And also, this past Saturday, the NOS Robotics Team ranked ninth out of 56 teams in Massachusetts, and they won an award for the design of their robot, so congratulations to them. Coming up, the Drama Guild has a show, The Addams Family, next Thursday to next Saturday, February 9th to the 11th. Tickets are on sale during lunch at the high school, but are also easily accessible online through their Instagram and other things like that. And finally, the NOS scholarships are now open, so best of luck to all seniors, including myself. Ben?
Hello, everyone, my name is Ben, I'm a junior at the high school. So sports are in full swing, we're nearing playoffs for winter sports. On 3rd of February, tomorrow, we'll be celebrating two championship teams, the cross-country boys team from the fall, and the indoor track boys team from this winter, at the girls' basketball game tomorrow. Also, congratulations to Hannah Martin, who recently surpassed 1,000 points in her high school varsity girls' basketball career. Spring sports are also beginning to start up, we have meetings at the end of February. And course selections just recently opened, and they close on the 14th. Juniors, sophomores, and freshmen are selecting courses that they wish to take next year. There's a PICC college talk on Tuesday, the 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. It's an excellent opportunity to ask questions about the application process. I believe it's mostly for juniors, but seniors are also welcome. There's a job and volunteer board and guidance that's mostly for the spring and for the summer for students to look for opportunities to both serve their community and join the job force. Dual enrollment has also begun for the high school. There was recently a class offered at Salem State University in Salem. I know that there's classes offered at Merrimack, and at Bunker Hill Community College, and at Northeastern Community College as well. And there are also pre-college summer opportunities being advertised by guidance. These are excellent ways, along with dual enrollment, for students to begin to complete bachelor's degrees and take years off of their, off of their college experience, and also save a lot of money. So it's an excellent opportunity, and it looks like the high school is getting a lot more active in this stuff, which I think is, which I think is great. So that's all that we have.
Great, thank you. Let's see if we have some questions. Ms. Picard?
Yeah.
Ms. Fietzke?
No questions.
Mr. Hicks?
I don't have any today. Thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
I'll just say, I think Hannah Martin is the first girl ever in North Andover history to surpass 1,000 points. Is that, is that true? Do you know? I think she's the first.
I think, I think she is the first in a very long time.
Okay, awesome. Good deal. That was it? Great job.
Oh, sorry. Just, you had mentioned for ticket sales, are they also going to be available at the door? I didn't notice if you had said that. Okay, sorry if you said that and I didn't hear it. And I'm thrilled to hear about, like, the dual enrollment with, for early college, that is fantastic, and I hope that lots and lots of students are taking advantage of that wonderful opportunity. I don't think we have anything else for you, as always, great job, you guys are awesome. Welcome to stay, and you're welcome to go to Panera and get some yummy stuff and support the Model UN, but you have, like, about 40 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, Dr. Gilligan, I think you are up.
All right, much like the last meeting where Ms. Picard presented about the CREST annual report, CREST is one of our collaboratives, special education collaboratives, tonight I will be talking just a little bit as presented here about the SEEM collaborative, which we're a member of, and we usually present, this is informational only, and it is the annual report for 2122. So SEEM collaborative is a special ed collaborative in North Andover as a member, along with Linfield, Melrose, North Reading, Reading, Saugus, Stonem, Wakefield, Wilmington, Winchester, and Woburn. And this report is simply something we put forward every year as informational, it's pretty comprehensive, and it's a really cost-effective partnership to be a member of their collaborative. And the report has information around their programming, particularly their specialties, as you'll see in section four, they have program information about what they offer, it goes also into district-based services that they can provide, professional development, grant services, and it's been a really good partnership with SEEM. At this time, usually, one of the only questions we get is, how many kids do we have at SEEM? You know, and we've had, it's three currently, and we've had four at some point during this past year. So the information's in there, I'm sure you'll spend a lot of time looking it over, but they're in really good financial shape, it's a really good group to kind of, us to get into. It goes in the other direction in terms of geography, and they have a tremendous leader. And so, any questions about the collaborative?
Do we?
I think, one of the other collaboratives, or one of the other out-of-district placements were projected to go up like, by 14% this coming fiscal year. Is, do we anticipate any of the tuition rates for this collaborative to go up?
Yeah, so...
And a lot, a little?
The, out of, the, the, the rates that go up, that you're talking about, this private school?
Yes.
Private day school?
Right.
For special education, these rates are between, projected between five and six percent increase, so it's not the 14% of OSD in the private schools.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Great. Next, as you guys recall, it was pretty exciting in the fall to have in Mr. Jackson, Superintendent Lavoy from Greater Lawrence Technical School, and our high school director of guidance, Meg Pinkston. And so, just an update on the After Dark. The After Dark program, for those who may not recall, it's Chapter 74 partnership program, Chapter 70 is what we receive and the monies we get for our regular student funding. Chapter 74 is for vocational school, so this would be a partnership between us and Greater Lawrence Technical School, and as you guys saw, there was a lot of excitement around it, where students would participate about half a day at North Andover High School, that go in the afternoon to Greater Lawrence Technical School, and participate in one of the programmings, whether it be heating, ventilation, and AC, welding, and metal fabrication, machine tool technology, automotive, so there's some really great options, and would be, we're looking now, we are going to proceed forward, we're partnering with them for next year, and see how this goes. I think, you know, it will be a really good opportunity for our students, particularly students who may want to then go from there to, you know, get an apprenticeship or into a trade school beyond this, but it really is an awesome vocational program. This started as a program at Lawrence High School, and, you know, in the last year, some Andover High students were able to participate. This year, us and Methuen are also going to join that mix, and would be looking, the high school will be looking to spring, sophomores this spring, to see if there's any interest. But they'd earn a North Andover High School diploma, a certificate from Greater Lawrence Technical School that qualifies them for these, you know, the different types of work, and it's really exciting, and something I think we wanted to do all along with our partnerships. So that's the After Dark program.
When they presented in the fall, Dr. Gilligan, I remember one of the things they provided us with was a MOA or an MOU that they had previously established with, I think it was Andover. Are we going to need to do a reading of that type of document and approve that in advance?
No, so I had council review, so in those documents that they provided in the fall, they were able to sign it with the superintendent and the superintendent from each district, so I wanted to run it through legal, which we have run a draft through legal, and so she said it would be fine for me to sign, it's, particularly for next year, it would be a pilot program for the year. So that was something that we were really cognizant of the fact, because we do have a deadline with the state that we're going to put this application in, so.
And my reflection was, the student would be in classes at North Andover High until approximately lunchtime, and then they would be transported by Greater Lawrence Tech to Greater Lawrence Tech for their afternoon programming.
Yep.
Thanks.
What was transportation home? Was it...
It would provide transportation.
Okay. Brought them back to the high school. Okay.
Did it shift the entire day for the kid from starting later at North Andover? Because it goes later into the evening?
Yeah, it's actually, the packet, they would start at 11 and go to 2 at North Andover High. They'd be transported over to Greater, Greater Lawrence Technical School, they'd be about, they'd be there from about 3 to 5:20. They do give them some form of a lunch before that as well, so.
Yeah, terrific, I mean terrific program with transportation food.
Can I just ask two quick questions?
Sure.
One, I think if I remember correctly, they were looking to start the pilot with about 10 students, is that still the target goal?
You know, it can be up to the percentage of students that we have in their day program. I think this first year, you know, I think Andover had won their first year in three total currently. Okay. The program was really designed originally at Lawrence High, so it was predominantly Lawrence, and so North Andover, I think if we even had one or two students do it, it is a significant shift for someone who wants to make a decision after their sophomore year to change what they're doing for the day. So, you know, I think we'll judge the interest in, if there are more than technically allowed, no pun intended with the technical piece, we'll, we'll talk to them about it. I mean, they're, they're pretty flexible, and I think one of the things with Andover and Methuen, and Methuen moving forward next year like us, is we need flexibility, like around the scheduling, around some of those, you know, pieces.
And then a quick follow-up, do we have any idea how we're going to get the word out and kind of quote-unquote advertise this with some of the students? Is that, I saw you write it down. Is, is guidance going to go into advisory or something like that? I mean, do we...
Well, Ms. Pinkston, something she touched upon, I believe, in the fall, and if she didn't, is they will, they will find a way to promote it with our students and let them know that it's an option.
Okay, and then my very last point is, we heard the students talk about some of the course offerings with, you know, Salem State and Merrimack, and Bunker Hill Community College, and moving towards this, which is the After Dark program, and this is all a huge benefit of switching, I think it was two years ago now, to the semester program, so away from trimester. So I think a lot of people kind of questioned why that was happening, and what the benefit was, and certainly in the first year, you know, kind of just getting used to the schedule, but, you know, congratulations and huge kudos to administration and administration for the high school for finding some programs that attract students, you know, in a different way to learn differently, and this program is amazing, really, pretty impressive, so.
We're excited for it, you know. I think this is an opportunity for kids, it's really hard to get into the technical schools, and I'm not sure how many kids know in eighth grade, I'm not sure what they want to do in high school, and I'm not sure how many kids know what they want to do when they're leaving high school necessarily, even what they want to major in in college, or what kind of field they want to go into, and so this is a really, this is another avenue for our kids, and to your point, Mr. McDevitt, anything we can do to open up different avenues for students is, is huge, so.
This is when I always say, I hope you'll provide an opportunity for all the eighth graders at North Andover Middle School to visit the tech school, to take a field trip in a bus, and to visit the tech school so they know it's an option for them, even if they don't decide to go there as ninth graders, if it's introduced to them again as juniors, they will have had an experience. I know other towns do this, I know we haven't done it, I know that the Greater Lawrence Tech personnel do come to North Andover Middle School to talk about it, but seeing what's there, and seeing the shops, seeing the hands-on opportunities could really be game changers for some students, so thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Helen. All right, I know I don't have anything else on the report, but I just have a couple quick items. Folks, it's going to be cold tomorrow. You know, I, it is going to be cold, we're expecting cold temperatures, particularly tomorrow afternoon into the weekend. You know, I have posted something on our website, our cold weather advisory, you know, we've been in touch with North Running Transportation, they'll have the buses running early, and I've also been in contact with all of the building principals, and letting them know that, you know, use our traditional precautions, you know, it's probably indoor recess tomorrow. I spoke with the athletic director, you know, maybe Saturday if there's a practice, that, you know, the, I don't, no one's outdoors, obviously, it's winter sports, but the distance runners, I see them all over, you know, those are things that we take into consideration. And Dr. Merely met with John Mullen and the townside Steve Foster from Facilities, so they'll be adjusting our heating system for the weekend from starting earlier tomorrow morning through Monday, A, for, you know, because of the extreme temperatures and for our students and staff, and B, for the sake of not having any pipes freeze or anything of that nature, so that is kind of the update on the cold weather. I also had just two other quick things. Last meeting, you guys had asked about the field trip, for the overnight field trip. We have typically done field trips, probably on a more of a cadence as we've gone ahead, and, you know, COVID had slowed things down, and then we, we probably approved, I don't know how many, field trips overnight, in a huge chunk. And so, simply put, the high school had put this in, back in November, when they had submitted it, we had a glitch with our system, which has since been fixed, and on our end, we didn't pick up on it. You know, there was, there's like a notification that had to be adjusted, because we got the notification early, and it was simple oversight, so appreciate you guys suspending the rules to get that through. It's something that we had, just haven't had a field trip in a long time, and it was an oversight, so I wanted to let you know on that. And then Ms. Marx is going to talk about NA reads for a second, but before I get to that, I just, this is really cool, I wanted to share, well, I'm gonna let Ms. Marx do the NA read, and I'm gonna share just one last thing, and then I'll go over to the chair's report, so.
Jim, can you put up this card? Thank you. Okay, so as most of you know, for a number of years, we've partnered with the Stevens Memorial Library in a North Andover Read, meaning to be with the town. So this year, it is food with family and friends, gastronomical delights, so if, this is from the Stevens Memorial Library site, Jim, if you can click on the link at the bottom, this will just give you some ideas, if you scroll down, there's lists of teen books, there's lists for adult books, we're doing a community cookbook, there were prizes, gift cards for entries to the cookbook, to restaurants in town, so pay attention, put in some of your family recipes for the cookbook, and I know I met with some of the teachers yesterday, and they were really excited about it, they thought the cookbook was a really cool idea, so just want to say that. And just another plug for the library, they also have, on their site now, have information for Black History Month as well, so I didn't pull that up, but that is there. And then, we have an author, as you know, we, most years have an author visit on various levels, so this is Raul III, and Raul III is an award-winning author, and he is a graphic novelist, so that's a little bit of a different twist for our students to be able to see something other than a traditional book. He's also Mexican-American, so we're showing some diversity in the authors that we bring in, and we have in the past as well. And he's also working on, his animation is going to be looked at for a television series, which will be really cool. So we, we applied to the Massachusetts Cultural Council and the North Andover Cultural Council to get money for this, and they help support this, they have for a number of years, I have already written the grant for next year, and we have received money for next year for this to be able to continue as well, so it's really exciting, and they've been a huge supporter, and they've actually given us more money every year, which is really nice. So this will go to all of our elementary schools on February 13th, and it will be a live stream, virtual, and we have art projects, we started that a little more last year, where we put some installation here at central office, we had some installations at Stevens Memorial Library. So our students, our upper grade students, like fifth grade, are going to be doing some of that intricate paper cutting that you see with the Mexican art, and one of his books, we have Let's Go to Market here, but he also has Let's Go Eat, which has to do with food trucks, so some of the kids are going to do Canva projects with food trucks and menus, and then some of our youngest kids, our primary kids, are going to do food sculptures, and those are actually going to go onto plates that the middle school students are making in our class. So it's really going across the grade levels, and myself and the art teachers will be doing that installation at the library on the 15th, so check out the library and, and see what they have there. And then just in terms of that, with North Andover Reads, obviously, we're promoting reading in books, and as in past years, I purchase books to go into all the libraries around this, so we have Let's Go to Market and Let's Eat, are in all of the elementary libraries. In addition to that, we have three other books, Midsummer Mayhem, A Place at the Table, and Save Me a Seat, which go into the five, not ABEC, but the five elementary school libraries, as well as the middle school, and then we have With the Fire on High and a Taste for Love, that have been purchased for the high school students, and that is worked, worked in conjunction with the librarians. So, and the kids, apparently, I met with the specialist leaders at the elementary level yesterday, and I am told that the kids are loving the Vamos books at the library for the read aloud, so, so it should be exciting. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Ms. Marx, and last, really cool, you know, some of this...
Question for Ms. Marx?
Absolutely.
You presented a few, a session or two ago, about the poster contest, about littering, did, did that deadline pass, and do we know if anybody entered?
It did pass. I am not, I am not aware that anyone did enter, and I think I would know if somebody did.
It was an individual thing, but I didn't know if any classrooms said, like, let's all do it together.
No, I know the, the principals put it out in their newsletters and everything, but it was a pretty quick turnaround, it came out really quick, and it was due pretty quick, so.
So maybe, maybe if they do it again, we'll, we'll have a little more lead time.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yeah, and with a lot of this, again, check out the newsletter, it's full of information, Cindy Parent does a great job with it, putting it together, but I just found out, really exciting, it's going to be in the newsletter, but I can't hold off. The, we had four students selected from our music programming to participate in the All-State Chorus and Band, and that's a huge deal, so the All-State Choir, Cole Brima for chorus, Andrew Buchanan for chorus, and Henry Wright for chorus, and then the All-State Symphonic Band, Luke Ralph with the trumpet, so really cool, we'll have a piece in the upcoming newsletter about them, and there's a blurb in the news on our website, but I found that out the other day, and I was excited. And we get kids selected typically, but it's a huge honor, and they'll be participating in early March, and they get to meet with a pretty famous conductor, the name escapes me, I wish I knew off the top of my head, coming up, but they'll be doing that, and excited.
And the number of students for junior and senior districts as well, which is the, the, hi, bigger than North Andover, smaller than states.
Yes.
But really, a super opportunity.
Yeah, it's just really cool, I mean, this is up there. Yeah, it's just really cool. I mean, this is, uh, up there with, you know, kind of being like an all-state, um, basketball player or something along those lines. So you're with the best of the best and good luck to those students. And that would do it for Superintendent's Report.
Okay, moving on to the Chair's Report. Um, this past Saturday, was it just this past Saturday? Oh, the weeks are going by very fast. Um, we had our first community chat of the year and, um, Ms. Picard attended with me. We had a few community members. Um, we had a really great, um, lively discussion and I think it was actually pretty successful. Um, I, we haven't set up the next one yet, but I'm open to suggestions on the frequency. Um, I know I, it wasn't, the turnaround time was kind of quick. Uh, I'll take on that. I didn't realize that there was more of a process to requesting the library room than there is. Um, so.
Yeah, and I would, I would just say, I'm so pleased with the help of the district administration and getting it.
Me too.
It was on the calendar. It was on the website in a couple of places. I know Sarah Brush sent it out to anybody who's on the town email. Like, I got a lot of play. Um, hopefully next time we can ask the principals to send it out with their Friday or Monday, uh, because that would, you know, parents really pay attention to that differently. Um, not everybody signed up for the, for the town emails, but I, I was really impressed with how much information was out there. I feel like-
Yeah, for the quick turnaround time.
People wanted to know it, it was out there available for them. And we did have some, some folks show up.
We did. We did.
That was good.
Um, do we have thoughts on frequency on, I mean, in my mind, monthly comes up, but I feel like that might be too frequent.
Yeah, we did it once per trimester. Um, and that seemed okay. Uh, and I know the high school doesn't have trimesters anymore, but the other schools all do at this moment. So perhaps maybe again in April, early April, before vacation.
Sound good to everyone?
Early April would be great.
And, I mean, of course, you know, families can and do contact us all the time through email or, um, Facebook or, you know, some, you know, phone numbers and, you know, there's lots of ways people can talk to us. And I, I love that Pam always is so helpful at reminding people that the best place to get information about your child is from your child's teacher. If you need some additional assistance, the, the building-based principal, you know, and then, you know, Ms. Marks is here in central office for anything that seems a bigger, um, conversation.
Right. Thank you.
I think the first weekend would be a good place to target. The weekend after that is Easter and then the weekend after that is, uh, vacation.
Right. That's true. Okay. Yeah. So that sounds like.
And I would be happy to do that alongside you if you, if you were going to go or not.
Sure. Yeah.
I'd be happy to go.
Sounds good. Okay. Um, item B is an update for the, uh, North Andover Educator Hall of Fame. Ms. Fietzke, are you?
I am the one in charge of it.
Sure.
I didn't get the information on it.
Okay.
So I don't know when the deadline is. Usually it's in April.
I think it's April.
Yep.
Oh, it's, I thought it was the 30th.
Oh, it might be.
I think it's the 30th. Okay. So we'll just add that on to next.
We had a couple of incomplete nominations, um, last year.
Yep.
That, uh, Mr. Landry was, um, some of the things we were missing were the administrator, um, supporting documents. So Mr. Landry was working on those, um, with some of our administrators. So we had a couple of, uh, nominees that, you know, you might be able to follow up on and get them complete so that you have. And then, of course, I talked last night to a couple of people who I know were students in town and said, you know, who are adults now and have their own students here and said, you know, who do you think maybe should be in our Hall of Fame? It was just such a nice opportunity to, to connect.
And it is open to anybody who's been retired for five years or more from the district.
And the forms are on the website, um, at the Educator Hall of Fame, which is linked on the agenda. And it is April 30th.
It is. Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you. Okay. And then I do have an item that's not listed because it just came in this afternoon. Um, but we do have two, um, virtual opportunities for open meeting law training. Um, and I'll, we'll see if we can get this sent out to the committee, but for now, um, there are two dates, February 13th from 6:00 to 7:30 or February 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30.
They were sent out to us?
They were sent to you? I couldn't see who was on there, so I wasn't sure.
My question is, are we, do we sign up as a group or is it whichever one is convenient for us?
I, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I, I read it because it, I, I read it as individual.
Okay.
Yeah. Which would be probably better because we all have different varying schedules, right? Okay.
Are you signed up?
Good job. Great. Okay. And that concludes the Chair's Report. We'll move on to old business, um, which is the Superintendent's FY24 Recommended Budget.
Madam Chair, what's going to be our process for this? So are we going to hear another presentation or are we just going to go into?
I'm not sure. That is a good question.
What I was gonna say is, um, the budget, it was ready to present, uh, at the first committee meeting in January. We did public hearing last time. Um, and so we've had an opportunity to-
Get any questions submitted. Uh, we answered quite a few last time. Uh, something about elementary libraries came up at the last meeting and I'm gonna have, Lorraine was not here unfortunately in the last meeting, so she'll speak to that. Um, and, um, but it's as presented, um, as we presented last time. And just so you know, uh, Jim and I did a piece, um-
Oh, I think we need a motion?
To?
Well, you will. I'm just highlighting, um, um, Jim and I just did a piece, um, in, in case you've missed any of it, um, for the NA Journal, um, as well as, uh, pre, you know, intro, uh, for NA Camp, so, of the budget. So, um, this budget, um, simply put, allows us to retain and i- i- increase the positions, um, that we added as needed last year as part of the recovery, uh, recovery services. Uh, the need has not gone away, but largely the funding for, um, that we covered last year with the ESAR funding. So last year's budget increase, although significant, um, we still covered over a million dollars, a million forty thousand in, um, ESAR funding for positions. Along the way, overall, the total overall budget has, um, included other things as well, including professional development and, um, you know, resources. But this, uh, these needs continue and the budget allows us, um, to add quite a few positions in perpetuity for the long haul. So.
Okay. So then I think we need a motion to approve so then we can discuss.
So I would, I would move to approve the Superintendent's Fiscal Year 2024 Recommended Budget as presented in the packet.
Or if I wanted to make a motion to amend that, do I need to do that before we do this or after?
And what?
The number. It can be done after? Great.
If there's a second. I'll second that.
So you seconded?
I'm seconding.
Okay, Andrew.
Okay.
That's not confusing at all. Okay.
Thank you. I wasn't sure about process.
Well, Pam.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So then is there discussion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to actually, uh, make a motion to increase that number from sixty million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars to sixty million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars with the additional twelve thousand dollars in funds to be divided evenly between the six elementary schools for the use of, by, of, by the school library media specialists. I, I know the, the administration and, and Ms. Marks does a good job of being creative and securing funding to make sure that our, our libraries can get new books. Um, but I want to make sure that that is a reliable and secured, uh, stream of funding for our librarians, um, uh, so that they can do the, the job that they have been hired to do. Um, I think if we're going to potential, uh, add in a budget item or add in a new position next year of a new library media specialist, that we need to equip them with the funds and the resources to do their job the very best they can. Oh, that was a lot, sorry.
So you're recommending that we increase the budget by twelve thousand dollars as opposed to moving money within the budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need a second to discuss that? Or do we just discuss it? I'm sorry.
You need a second.
Okay. Is there a second? Well, I can, I, I would second it for discussion. Okay. Is that, yeah, okay. So I think last time we talked about, like, you know, there were different places and resources that the funding can come from for our libraries. So can we clarify that?
Certainly.
Is that okay? I feel like that needs a clarification before we move on with anything else.
Yeah, and that's, when you turned it over to me, I was just trying to say that I, you know, one of the questions came up was about libraries. Ms. Marks was not here last time. And, um, you know, we didn't get that question in advance, so I didn't, um, have the information on the top of my head about, you know, a real specific line item. So, Ms. Marks, um, you want to give them an update, uh, that we discussed today?
Thank you. In general. Um, so when I first came to the district, the libraries were closed and locked and dark. There was nothing happening in terms of libraries. Eventually after, probably a year or two after I was here, there were parent volunteers who would go in and they would simply lend books. Can you hear me okay? From the libraries. I'll try, I'll try harder. Eventually we had one librarian for all five elementary schools because at that point, remember, there wasn't the ABEC. Um, and we've had, we had a few iterations of that. One of them is still standing and that is Ms. Ahern. So she's still here as a librarian, but at one point she was a librarian for all of the schools. Um, we have since, because we do feel that the libraries are important, worked up to four librarians. We hired a new librarian this year. And if you look at the budget that was presented, there is an additional elementary librarian in that budget. So I think that, that is showing that we feel that this is an important position. Um, you know, I, you're all aware that there's always vying for needs and it's, uh, it's a tough decision making those priorities. And we had this discussion as a group, um, and we kept that position in there. When we added the librarians, they were no longer called librarians. They were called library media specialists. So their role is far beyond just, um, lending books, checking out books, stacking the shelves. Um, in this role, we really needed to be able to expand what they had available to them because all they had was the books that were in those dark libraries at that time. So that, we have purchased iPads. They have green screens set up. We have coding materials. They do robotics. We purchase a program, programming keyboarding without tiers every year and they are the primary teachers of those keyboarding skills in those library classes. Um, I met with the librarians about a month ago and they asked me if they could have an additional Chromebook each because the Chromebook keypad looks a little bit different than the, um, like my computer keypad. And so they have those. They were purchased and they have those. Um, so they also work with a lot of other digital tools and talk about digital literacy and critical thinking around those, those pieces. So I just want to, I want to make sure people understand that the role is beyond just those books. And all we had was books in the library. So what we've done is expand those tools for the librarians as well. Um, in addition, with the, um, impetus on literacy over the past number of years, we have provided classroom libraries for all of our teachers. So historically, many of you know teachers, they would go to the book sales, to the library. You are a teacher, you know how this works. And they use their own money and they would try to, try to build a classroom library. That's what happened. We purchased classroom libraries for every single elementary and kindergarten classroom. Minimum number of books in any of those libraries per classroom was four hundred. And in some they were bigger. So that's a big change for a lot of our teachers and what they had to do. In addition to that, in the last year, year and a quarter, we purchased for our primary grades, which is K through two, the Geodes books, which you heard me mention, which is an additional sixty-four books in every one of those classrooms. And then we purchased wit and wisdom. And if anybody was here in the summer, you saw the boxes and boxes of books. So trade books, not, um, not basal anthology kind of things. These are book books. Um, and just as an example, core texts, um, in kindergarten, there's twenty-eight additional books. Um, and then we have volume of reading books because I think, um, back a while, I explained that part of the new, um, teaching is really to build the background knowledge and the context knowledge. So a lot of this is done in modules and reading, nonfiction, fiction books, um, poetry, everything around a topic. So you're really making strong background knowledge for kids to, to attach that comprehension. So we have volume of reading books. An example in kindergarten, there's forty-four additional books on those topics. In, um, grade three, there's sixty-nine additional books in every classroom on those topics. So there are books and students have access to a lot of books and a lot of these are new books, um, diverse literature, current literature, vetted literature. Many are Caldecott and Newbury Ruiners. So there's, there's quality books in, in each and every classroom as well. Um, historically, however, PTOs have helped support the library. So they have, they have bought books for the library with the scholastic bucks. So that is something that is still happening and has happened in the past. Um, over the past number of years, obviously I mentioned with North Andover Reads, I purchased those books for all of our libraries at every level. Um, I have done that with other books. For example, a couple of years ago, we had Kate Mesner. We got a number of books for her from picture books, um, to the Ranger, Ranger, something ser- not Ranger Rick. That's a, that's a, um, it's a book. Um, oh gosh, I can't think of the rest of it. Something Ranger. And then the history busters, history smashers, and that had to do with women's history because she had just written a book. Um, so we were celebrating the anniversary of women, that women's history. Um, we also have purchased the MCBA winners for the librarians. Um, and any other requests, we, we purchased Spanish heritage books for Spanish Heritage Month, especially at our schools that had a larger Latinx population. And we felt, the librarians felt that there were not enough books that represented those students in those libraries. So those have been purchased, as I said, among other things. We also have Epic and Sora, which are online books for our students. And now that every student has a Chromebook in their hand, they have access to those. And one of our librarians, our new librarian, Mr. Frusha, she, um, created a North Andover, um, Reads book list for the current North Andover Reads of books on Epic. So all the students have access to that. Um, last year, um, again, I meet with the librarians pretty regularly. Last year, they talked about the need to, um, have money for like bookbinding and things like that. So we established, I talked to Jim and Greg, and we established, uh, budget through central office that they could purchase what they needed. Each of them had a specific amount of money to purchase what they needed to fill, fulfill those needs. And that came out of a central office line item. So, um, to date, um, as the library has developed, we haven't used a specific operational budget to provide those materials. We meet with them. They tell me what they need and they've received what they needed. Um, going forward, we can continue to work with the librarians and the principals as a team to allocate funding to address any needs that come up in the library. But I wanted to make sure people understood that, you know, their title changed. We, we really focused on some of those technology needs and digital needs. Um, I think it was at this meeting I mentioned going to an MCAS webinar, ELA, and the need for kids to understand what the technology is so that they can be successful taking the MCAS. That's something I met with the librarians about to make sure that they were teaching specific things that I learned about or heard about or was reminded about during that webinar. And that's when they asked about the Chromebooks and they have the Chromebooks. So I just wanted to make it, make that, um, understood and also just share with you the amount of books that have gone into each classroom that are really new books, current books, diverse books in all of the classrooms as well. So, um, I was a humanities coordinator before this. I'm a literacy person. I read myself every day. I would never say, I don't want books in our libraries. That will, you will never hear those words from me. But I also want people to understand, we have supported, um, getting books into our classrooms and books into our schools in some other ways. Um, and everything is a, is a progression. We got from a darkened locked library to, you know, hopefully five elementary libraries if the budget passes this year. We've gotten technology, um, equipment and tools in their hands. We have keyboarding and instruction for our students, which we did not have before. And our teachers have abundant libraries in each and every one of their classrooms as well. So, but we will continue, um, again, it, some of it came through a, uh, operational budget line item for the binding and things like that at their request last year. Others came through grants. Some of it came through, some of the wit and wisdom came through a grant we wrote. Some came through ESAR funding. Um, so variety, a variety of sources, but we have, um, certainly done our best to support them in their needs.
Are there questions or thoughts? Ms. Picard?
I have a question or two. Um, when the PTOs are providing funds for libraries, how are we ensuring equity across the district? I mean, larger PTOs, smaller PTOs, we're not providing equity.
No, it's, it's really not. The PTOs, um, sponsor their schools and their schools activities. It's not like, um, one school's PTO is going to say, oh, we have this extra money. It's not like one school's PTO is going to say, oh, we have this extra money, and we're going to give it to you. So.
So if, if you felt that there was a school that had greater need for library funds, would you provide that funding?
Yep.
At the district level to those schools?
Yes, so that example was the Spanish Heritage Month. And the librarians came to me and they said, we have these, these books in these, in these libraries. These two libraries, we feel have a greater percentage of students represented. And we feel like we need more books, and so we got more books.
Thank you. And then, this is probably more a question for, well, maybe it's, maybe it's for you, Ms. Marks. But did the principals ask specifically for additional funds for libraries?
They did not ask me for that, no.
They did not specifically ask? And that's how you put together your budget?
I'll, I'll let Jim talk to that more.
The principals get what we call a school allocation, and there are multiple line items that they can use. And it's based on the need in that given year. So you, you'll see in the existing budget, they're carrying forward level services. Some library item, line items are there, because those principals chose to, to spend in that particular year. What it means for the other schools, especially the elementary schools, is they were getting it from other places. So they use their allocations for other things than library books.
So in a sense... The way I think of it is that there's a pie, right? And who holds the knife to the pie? The principal holds the knife to the pie to say, okay, this is where things are needed. Or if we have a line item in the budget, then we're holding the knife and telling them, you know, how they can spend their money and, you know, what their priorities are. So I just, I just think that's something to think about. I'm, I'm good for the moment. Thank you.
I want to ask my questions, but I just have... No, that's, that's fine. That's good. Just one additional question. Is it safe to assume, based on what you said, that nobody's going without? If, if a school asks for something for the library, they're getting it? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hex, do you have other questions?
Comments? I, yes, I, I'm greatly appreciative of all the work that has happened from the administration to reopen libraries and make sure that there are books in classrooms and to get curriculum materials that provide our kids with those things and to make sure that technology is accessible. And those are steps that need to happen. And I, I am very happy that those things have happened. I also know that library collections can quickly become outdated. New priorities will often emerge. Books get used and abused, hopefully, because they're being loved so, so dearly by kids when they take them out. And my goal here is not to say that we, we aren't doing, we haven't done a lot of work to improve what was, but there's always more work to be done. And it's to make sure that people, or our library, our library media specialists have the tools at their disposal to do the thing that they need to do. And one of the responsibilities is to curate and make sure that the libraries are up to date with the right books and to, to do that work, that they have that ability and that is protected and reliable. And that they, and that they can, it's predictable. And they can plan out how to do certain projects over, over a few years in terms of what books they might want to purchase or invest in and to be responsive to their kids' needs. And that's like their professional obligation. And I want to make sure that they're able to do those things without having to go through all the different channels. And I really do appreciate all the creativeness and all the, the support that the, that the administration has given the elementary schools in this respect. But I also want to expand what we are able to do for them. And in the end, I mean, it represents a 0.019% increase in the overall budget. Which means a very small amount of money to do a lot, to give people, empower our people to do a lot of really great work.
Ms. McDevitt?
Thank you very much. Well, one, thank you, Joe, Ms. Hex, for your motion. Ms. Marks, you know, thank you very much for the explanation in terms of, you know, what's been done, you know, what's going on, you know, the investment in books, you know, not just at the library level, but really at the classroom level, where, you know, a student can, you know, walk by something, right? And just, you know, pick up a book on their, you know, way out at, on the way to lunch or, you know, at the end of the day and, and sign out or do whatever they do in terms of, you know, making sure that they, the teacher knows that the student has the books. So all of that is great. And, and, you know, read studies in terms of, you know, what, what helps kids become, you know, better readers is, you know, making sure that they've got a variety of books that are interesting to them, that they see themselves in and, and are relatable. And so, you know, just hearing a little bit of the conversation in terms of, you know, the librarian, media specialist reaching out and identifying a specific need in terms of, you know, I need more of this type of book in my school, I think is, is great and fantastic. I don't think anybody here is opposed to increasing a fund in terms of library. And, you know, if you look at the schools, the breakdown that's actually in our packet, not necessarily here in terms of how we're spending, you know, there's a li- library line item for each of the schools in, in terms of what they're able to spend. And so, you know, I, I know that there's specific money that's being carved out. I think the question or the challenge that I have for this tonight is it's adding $12,000 on, right? It's not a reallocation of where those funds are, but it's really kind of, at the end, just adding something on. And I'm not saying it's not worthwhile, but we've kind of been through the process. You know, I don't, I don't know what creativity we've looked at with Dr. Gilligan, perhaps in terms of moving that. But I think our goal in terms of timeline and process is to approve a budget tonight. And whether or not it's $12,000 higher than where it is right now, I'm not sure what direction the committee will take. But I'm not sure that just arbitrarily raising something $12,000 at the end is, is the move that I'm going to go in.
I think that we can talk a little bit. I think there are opportunities to maybe reallocate some funding. I've talked to a couple of the principals. And I think that, that's a conversation that, you know, we certainly can have.
I think it's important to know that we're confident we will meet all the needs of the libraries in the coming year with the proposed budget and the other opportunities we have. As I said, the principals have that ability to move funds if needed. I don't think they will have to use it for the libraries, because we have, for at least another year, funds to do so and to ensure that they have all their needs met. Given the conversation that's taken place, we'll certainly take that into account as we build the FY '25 budget. And if there aren't these kind of funds available, we would include them in the, in the operating budget.
Right, that's kind of how I was thinking, as if it's, it seems like it's ready to go now. And Ms. Marks, you have a really good working relationship with the librarians. So the funding is, they have what they need now. And yes, I, I do agree, we want to make sure that this is what continues, that we don't accidentally, you know, miss budget and not have funds for libraries. But I don't see, I, I feel like that's, I mean, the priorities are here, so we know that.
Madam Chair, I wonder if anybody here remembers the conversation about science kits? Were you on school committee at the time of science kits?
Yes.
So there was once upon a time, this big push for science kits, that science kits needed to be specifically funded through the budget. And there needed to be a line item for science kits. There was also a time when there was a, a big conversation about there needed to be a line item for drama. There needed to be a line item for music. And the way that we fund our schools is we trust our principals to make decisions about the programs in their buildings. And we trust our administrators to really ask a lot of questions of, of those, of those principals, so that when we get a budget, it makes sense. And so I, I totally admire what you're trying to do with, with libraries. I think it potentially opens a Pandora's box, where every program in our schools is going to come in and ask for, I need a line item for science kits. And I need, and science kits went, you know, I mean, they went out of style pretty quickly. Standards changed, and, and eventually, we dropped the line item for science kits. So it is a challenge. It's always a challenge. And I've, I've come in here as a, as a member of the public and, and wrote a poem that I read to you about science and, I mean, about music and art and encouraging specific line items for that. So it's, it's important. And I think having the conversation is important. So I appreciate that we've had the conversation. But I, I won't be supporting the, the motion to change it. Especially, as Mr. McDevitt says about additional revenues, it's a delicate balance, right? If it's not coming out of our own budget, are we asking the police to give us $12,000 for our libraries? Or the fire department? Or, you know, if we want to do it, to me, it needs to be done within our budget. And if it's done within our budget, you know, am I saying, don't hire the media specialist? Because the important thing in our budget is to take $12,000 and put it towards the library. And then we don't have enough for that media specialist. Or we don't have enough for, you know, something else that's, that's also a priority. So, so I get what you're saying, too. Like, there's always competing priorities.
But I think it is a priority right now. So it doesn't, I didn't mean to cut you off, but the, as you said, priority, literacy and libraries and lending books and books in books in classroom is very obviously a priority in the district.
Currently funded.
Currently funded. And you've, like you've said, like, that's what our administration does. That's, we, we trust that they will do what is needed, and it's obvious that they have.
I'm just wondering in terms of process. In four weeks ago, five weeks ago, whatever it was, a few weeks ago, we had the first recommended budget thing. Someone that night talked about it. We had a public hearing last week. Somebody talked about it. And I'm bringing it up tonight. And it feels like, I understand, like, things don't always go the way you want. But like, I feel like, well, this is the process, right? This is where we're supposed to sit here and talk about it and advocate for the things we want. Because that's, like, frankly, that's why I was elected, to advocate and to fight for things. We don't get to participate in the planning of the recommended budget, but we do get to participate in just talking about it and advocating for the things that we want to see included in it, right? Like, that is, that is our job. And I also feel like, at the end of the day, like, this budget does a lot of great things. And I'm really happy that we're securing positions that we added through Esther of money to be permanent. And that, that makes me happy, because those are things that we wanted to do. But also, if you look at it, is it's level services. We're doing the same thing next year that we did this year, which is what we did last year, right? So like, we're doing, we're, it's sort of the stagnation. And like, I understand, like, the method, methodology behind that. But that's also there. It's like, we should also be thinking about, be aspirational in terms of what are all the things we really want for our kids? And then go out and fight for it. And not just not settle for, okay, I think this is what we, like, for, for the bare minimum. I want, I want to ask for more and like, and go for it. Like, that's, I'm going to continue to do that. I'm going to continue to fight for the funding, for the things that really matter to our kids. And again, like, I appreciate the creativity in the, in the progress that has been made. But it's too easy to slip back into dark libraries again, right? And I, if that's going to happen, I want, I want there to be another level of protection in there that we, that we have. So that's why I, I obviously am supporting it. But I think that's one of the things that we should also consider. Like, as, like, we've heard a lot about what is and is not the role of the school committee. Approving this final number is very much our role, right? And we've had three meetings now to talk about this, but we've never had an opportunity for us to, we gave directives about, like, what we wanted and the goals. But like, we also haven't really talked about what the numbers are and what the number is going to be, other than just taking what was presented here. And I want to just keep that in perspective as well.
So you're wanting assurance that as we continue forward, that there, the libraries are funded? Because right now, they are.
They are through all these, like, and I, I, through all these other ways, that they make sense and it's worked, right? But if a principal is then, and I don't want them to ever have to be in this position, because I want them to be able to do all the things that they want. If they are then presented with other things that are then a priority, what then is, is the thing that, that gets cut, right? And we're not in that position now. And I, and why?
Right, so I'm saying you want reassurance moving forward.
Yeah.
Which doesn't necessarily mean we need to increase the budget now, but somehow put something somewhere that has an assurance that a library is priority.
Last fall, we did the budget directives. That would have been the time, probably, to put something like that in. And maybe next fall, you put it in, like, ensure that there's a...
I think there's two things that I would just add. And I think Ms. Vichy brings up an excellent point. I mean, I, again, I don't think anybody is, you know, looking to go back to those days of the dark libraries. And, and I remember being, you know, the library dad, you know, on a number of occasions and helping kids find and check out books. And, you know, certainly, the media librarian specialists are, are doing an amazing job and far more than me just stamping out a book. But, you know, when I, when I think of this, I'm, I guess I go back to the administration and asking the building principals and the media specialists, what do you need? And hearing that their needs are being met is, is actually very reassuring to me. I've not heard from any parents who have said, like, my kid can't go to a library, you know, during school hours. My kid's classroom has, you know, poor books, you know, things of that nature. And, and there's always more diversity and, and things that we can add to those. I'm not hearing that as a, a cry from the community. And hopefully, it's not, never a cry. But I, I think if we were hearing that, then that becomes part of our budget directive to ensure that that is reallocated or, or put in specifically. And, and I think I would support, I mean, you bring up a good point in terms of process, right? And, and if we wanted to put $12,000 into the budget that's there, you know, town manager has already met. The, the departments have, you know, have already kind of submitted their numbers in terms of where they are. I would be more comfortable than, you know, and I'm just making this up, like, do we need, I'm just, again, picking at something in here, right? But like, electricity, like, could we drop? Everyone knows that our rates are going through the roof. So, bad example. But, you know, can we drop electricity by $12,000, Dr. Mealy? Like, is that possible to do? We've done a number of different things. Like, could I take $4,000 from there, right? So that's the work that I think, if you're looking to change something, is once that budget is presented to us, then you spend time with Dr. Mealy and you kind of work through some of these things and then try to do that. And I know Dr. Mealy and I have spent, especially in the beginning, you know, a lot of hours kind of going through some very specific line items in the budget. So I, I, I hear you. I, I just, I would be in favor of kind of putting it in if I could see where we were moving from within the dollar amount that we have right now.
Two things I'd just like to respond to. Like, one of our budget directives is to make sure that we protect resources for, for teachers. Provide faculty with up-to-date instructional resources. And I think this qualifies there. And second, Mr. McDevitt, one of the things that I did not like in terms of, like, that you just said, is all the other departments have met and we've been given our number. I don't like that we have been given our number, that we then have to meet. Like, and, and I'm not saying, I'm not blaming you. And yes, and I understand that there's the process that goes into that. I haven't agreed on that number yet. Right, and I want, I, that's what we're here for, to, to make sure that's a number that we will agree to.
But, but that would be no different than, you know, the police saying, we would like three new cruisers. I mean, that's a conversation that the chief of police has with the town manager in terms of establishing what those budget is and where the prioritization of that money is, which is no different from DPW saying, you know, this is what we need in order to fix roads. I mean, I don't know if you've driven in town, but there's a significant number of potholes, right? And I know that they're working towards that and a plan for that. But it's not just, well, I, I need $17 million to fix all of the potholes in, in town, right? And that's just what I want. I mean, it, it's a partnership of all of the departments within town. And, you know, this is where we are from a recommended budget from Dr. Gilligan. And if you're so inclined to increase that, then you've, you've made a motion.
Yep, thank you.
Can I add just one thing? I think it's important just to know that we are keenly, every year, looking at what are our needs, right? And what are our priorities? How, how do we be aspirational? How do we, you know, meet these needs? And so, you know, the majority of our budget over time has been staffing. And so, you know, the majority of our budget over time has been staffing, but, you know, just because something might be worked in through other funding sources to try to meet those needs, we have a lot of priorities around what those needs are, and we've, I think, put, in the last two years, pushed the needle more than we ever have. I, I don't, I can't think of anyone more than, you know, the group of, the leadership team advocating for what those things are, and trying to get that out in the forefront, well-being, also, you know, sustainable, so we don't just drop off a cliff, but we look at, you know, we wanted to tackle class size, you know, in elementary, and that's something, like, we continue to do. We want to continue to have resources. We went many years without any, you know, it might have been eight or nine years that I was in central office where we didn't, it wasn't until maybe 2016 or so, we got our first $55,000 towards any type of curriculum resource moving forward. So we have to weigh this every year, and so these are, these would be the biggest budget increases, you know, working forward. And I just wouldn't want anyone to think, from our perspective, adding something, or not seeing something specific in a line item, doesn't mean that we haven't considered those priorities, or it's not something that we're working on doing. Because we meet a lot of needs that are really important across the realm of academics, co-curricula, all those things through a variety of funding sources. I just wanted to say that. We are tasked with that balance, you know, finding and advocating for those needs every year.
Okay, so I think we need to vote on Mr. Hicks' amendment. Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay. Ms. Picard?
No.
Ms. Vitski?
No.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
And I will also vote no. And then I think we have to go back to, you had, you made a motion.
I'll give you the total number here, sorry, I lost my page. Do you want to read the number? Sorry.
So we move that we approve.
The budget as presented in our binders of $60,364,146. I can't read that either.
Okay. Is there a second? Or, I thought you moved it earlier, but you didn't read the whole thing.
He did, but then it was, but then it was amended.
Right.
I seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then Joe had this amendment.
So, so now I think it's back on discussion, right?
So do we have a second? We need a second for this moment.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sorry. And discussion. Should we just have an open floor? Ms. Picard, do you have comments or questions?
No.
Ms. Vitski? Mr. Hicks?
Nothing else.
Mr. McDevitt?
Nothing else.
And I don't either, so I think we are ready to vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are 4-2-1. Okay. Moving on to item B of old business, which is school calendar for the 23-24 school year. So are we voting on this tonight?
Yes.
We are voting on it. It is the second reading, but I, I thought it was a little wonky, but, okay. So do we have a motion?
So I will move that we approve as presented in the packet, the school calendar for the 2023-2024 year with a pre-Labor Day start of, I want to get my date right, August 30.
Is there a second?
I'd like to amend it, but I don't know if we should just.
For the purposes of allowing for the amendment, I will second Mr. McDevitt's motion.
There's a lot of amendments tonight.
I know.
Okay, and then you want to amend?
Well, we have discussion now.
Discussion first, sorry. Okay.
So I would, I would propose, like I did last meeting, moving the January 12 PD day to January 2nd, having the teachers come back, do PD, and students come back on the 3rd. And then I also, I know that we all received the email from Jen Goldman, suggesting that we take away Election Day as a day off, have school that day, and move parent-teacher conferences to the 10th, which I actually thought was a pretty good idea, so.
Can I just ask a quick question? There is no election that day, right? Is it, it's an off-year, right?
Right.
There's no president, or there's nothing state?
Correct.
Okay.
For our teachers, it would not be, it's not listed as a holiday, but for some of our other union members, Veterans Day is a holiday, even, and it specifically says in the contracts, I believe, something about when it falls on Saturday, then it's observed on Fridays. I also, like, believe the town will be off that day as well, in observance of the, the day.
Right.
The Massachusetts law is, for legal holidays, is, once during the week, it's during the week, and then if it's on Sunday, it goes, it's served on Mutton Day, but on Saturday, there's some ambiguity in terms of when it legally gets observed, so I think it's officially on the Saturday. But I think we should protect that day for our teachers and to be off as well. I think it gets, if the town is going to be off, then the town should be off.
I wonder if we moved the calendar discussion to January, February, a few years ago, at the request of, at least in part, teachers, because we were talking about starting before or after Labor Day, and teachers wanted to be able to make their vacation plans, and we weren't deciding on the calendar until, you know, April or something. But we are currently in, in teacher negotiations. I wonder if we might want to table this discussion for some period of time, so that we could have some input from our teachers. It is our decision, what we do with this, but we certainly would want to, you know, work with, with the input of our, of our community. I know Ms. Goldman did have that input, and I appreciate that, but, and I think that we did, we, our caller asked for a pre-Labor Day start, I think, today? Post, she asked for post. Sorry, sorry, caller. Caller who wasn't expecting, Jenny. Jenny, not caller. But I wonder if, if there's a need for us to vote on this tonight and make it final, or if we have a little bit of latitude and could, could wait a while on this.
I would say, just historically, and Mr. McDevitt, I think you've been here, as someone mentioned earlier, quite some time, but I think historically, we were voting more in March, late March.
And it, it has to do a lot with when Labor Day is, right? I mean, this Labor Day is kind of the middle of that, that beginning, like, when it was very late, like, wasn't it, like, the 7th or the 8th? It was as late as it could be, so, you know, having that conversation, this, for me, this doesn't seem like it makes that huge difference, so I just.
I do think families still like to know earlier, rather than later. Because it's not just teachers making plans, it's families making vacation and college plans.
And then summer vacations, or things of that nature.
And then summer are figuring out childcare.
Right, yeah.
On that note, I would actually be more in favor of a post, I can't believe I'm saying it, a post-Labor Day start, because although I don't like the potential of going to June 24th with the 185th Day, that Friday off, I think, is challenging for elementary schools in terms of daycare, just like, it, it's just like, it's, it's a hard day to have to try and find people to watch your kids, when you have the, the Friday of Labor Day off.
But if you're starting after Labor Day.
You don't have to worry about it, because there'll be camps and things to do.
But not camps that week?
There's more.
That's the problem.
Well, they're not in town.
Yeah.
So just looking quickly, I just pulled up, and I thought that I was right, and I think this is what Mr. Hicks said, but November 10th is the Massachusetts observation of Veterans Day, so.
Well, that's what's listed.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, so, I think it just, you had said we would be closed on that day, which is correct, right? You, that's what you were saying.
The town is, the town calendar is going to be closed.
Yeah, it, it's a state holiday, so, I mean.
The legal holidays in Massachusetts are, they might, the law says, if it's on Saturday, it should be observance Saturday, but they might have also made a little difference, change.
Yeah, and, and it says long weekend, so I, I think that, in, in honor of the veterans, I, I don't think the 10th is negotiable, I mean, to anybody, I mean, with us, I mean, whether or not we have school on the 7th or not.
The parade will be on Saturday. The parade will take place on Friday.
I have no idea.
I would just say that, the last meeting, that I had followed up on this, because, you know, I think, to Mr. Hicks's point, I think there is a little bit of ambiguity in terms of when it was observed, or at least in the past, it had been. So at the last meeting, I did mention that the town is observing and closing Town Hall for that, and I also connected with the Veteran Services Coordinator for North Andover and Boxford, Joe LeBlanc, and he thought, you know, he felt that it was, although the, the activities are on that Saturday, he thought of having the opportunity to observe it on that Friday was a good idea, in his opinion, so that's what I shared last time, just to follow up on it.
It might be the federal day.
The federal government recognized it on the 10th, no matter what, regardless of what the state says.
Well, we have it listed as so.
Yeah.
Is anyone concerned about Juneteenth and how that affects the end of the year? Because that, that pre-Labor Day start on the 30th has us having our last day, our half day, after Juneteenth, on the 20th, if there's five days of snow, but that's really, that's really, who knows, anyway? I mean, there could be more or less than five days of snow.
Or super cold days.
Going back after Labor Day, you know, we would get out on the 14th, which is great, then conceivably, if we had five snow days, we would go to school for two, we would have Juneteenth off, we would come back on Thursday, Friday, and then come back on a Monday. I can't think of a more disruptive way to end to the end of the school year.
It's really going to be a challenge.
Bookending the school year with, with Labor Day and Juneteenth, not, not, no criticism of Juneteenth, that just happens to fall when it does, right?
Yeah, it really bookends.
Holly, can you remind me again of the?
The first one?
What Ms. Goldman had suggested?
Oh, she suggested keeping school on the 7th, because it's not an election year, and moving parent-teacher conferences to the 10th, but that would, in that scenario, the kids would have it off, but the teachers would be working.
Okay, and then that, that's the Veterans Day issue? Okay. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
I do have a question. Holly, you were suggesting that PD day in January move, is that us that makes that decision, or is that an admin decision on the PD day? Is that us? Is that you?
You set the calendar, so you'd be officially set in what day.
But you guys set the, the early release days.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I knew that there was something that you set that we didn't, so I was, thank you. So remind me what you were suggesting the movement would be from January?
12th to January 2nd.
To January 2nd. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I love that idea.
It extends the break by a day for families.
And it's a nice, gentle way to start back in for teachers.
For teachers, right.
Yeah, again, I would just, if we were thinking about that, I would, I would want to know what the teachers' perspective on that would be.
So you go back, there's a lot of people that I know enjoy that long weekend. You know, we'd come back, then, if that were the case, the students would come back for three days, they would have.
The rest of the month.
A full five, and then a four, and then they'd be back to regular scheduled programming for the rest of the month. So we'd go three, three, five, four.
We've always had snow days in January, too. So we're not, we're not usually going all five days each week.
And again, with that, January 1st, where it falls on a Monday, it doesn't seem that big a deal to take a Tuesday, but if January 1st fell on a Friday, then we'd be taking, you know, if we start to set a precedent of January 2nd, rather than elongating the Martin Luther King Day weekend.
So what's the current motion?
That is a good question.
I think Holly made an amendment to, sorry, Ms. Vitski made an amendment to.
Not officially.
Not official, oh, there were.
No. I didn't, I was just discussing.
It was just a question, never mind. I was wrong.
Learn.
So still, an August 30th start is the motion, with no official requested.
Dr. Mealy, can you scroll up a little? Thank you.
Do other people feel like we need to vote tonight? We could ask to withdraw the motion if we felt like we wanted more time.
I, I don't. I'm inclined to vote tonight. I don't see, I, I think people want to know, either way, whether they're happy with it or not. I think, you know, there's, everybody's 50-50 on it, but I think they just want to know to make plans. And I, I'm not sure what, I know that our teachers are in negotiation, but I feel like this is pretty standard, but I'm not sure what else we would wait on.
The only thing I can tell you is I won't be here at the next meeting.
I will not, I will not be here at the next meeting. It doesn't matter, you can vote without me, but.
What else, what, what else would we wait for?
I have said a couple of times that I think seeking input from the teachers specifically would be good to do, but.
For which part? What, what teacher input are you looking for?
Well, if we were talking about moving to the 2nd instead of the 12th, I would be interested in what the teachers have to say, and it has been in our contract for the last few years when the first day for teachers could be. So did that go through this year?
The wording of the contract was no earlier than, if I remember correctly.
Two contracts ago, it was no earlier than, and then it was really specific, the last contract, the current contract, 20 to 23. So I think, Andrew, you're exactly right, it was no earlier than, it didn't specify, you know, it specified what day teachers would come back, and then the most recent language, which we looked at, it just, we spelt it out for the three years.
But, but right now, with no amendments, we're not talking about moving to January 2nd from January 12th. So what we presented last time, if anybody had any comments, teachers or anybody else, they had an opportunity to do that.
Correct.
If we were amending it, that would be, that would be different. We might want people to have time to process the amendment. So everybody else feels ready to vote?
Is the date of our next meeting?
16th.
The one after that would be March?
I don't remember off the top, sorry.
Yeah.
I just don't want a delay if people are waiting for plans.
Again, it's only been a couple of years that we've done this, and so early, so it doesn't feel like a delay to me, but it might feel like a delay to others, and, and we have had it on our agenda, if people are paying attention.
I've gotten, I think, one email, so I'm not positive. I've only gotten one email, I think, I can't remember getting any other texts or questions about it. And then we had a caller today.
I've had a couple.
Okay.
I don't have one.
So I, I'm not sure if it's something that we have to rush on, and, you know, we can always say, and I'm okay with you guys voting next week without me, that, that's absolutely fine. I mean, if the community wants to add some input, I think, you know, the proposal of January 2nd from the 12th, you know, is definitely a change for people. I don't, I don't know if people would, how they would respond to that, and, you know, what their, what their thoughts are. You know, I know people travel, that might be a good opportunity if they're returning home.
So I guess the question is, is, do we want to amend the calendar? Because I feel like if we're going to amend it, then we need to postpone the vote. If we're not going to amend, to me, it seems like we should vote. Does that sound right?
I mean, I'll make an amendment, but we can also just.
I'm not, I'm not sure for myself if moving the PD day to the 2nd would be the best choice. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, you can call for a vote, and if we vote it down, then we can do another vote.
I think over time, sometimes motions fail.
Okay, so is, so we've already?
Do you want to make the amendment, or do we just want to table it, or what do we?
Well, do we have a way to get more, if we do table it, is there a way to get more specific feedback from stakeholders?
Right, that's the thing, is like, are we gonna, so you want to ask the teachers, so do we ask our union leaders to ask that question? I don't, do we specifically go, you know, solicit their information, or do we just put it out there, wait for a week, and see who's paid attention? I don't know.
Does that, does that, we have to vote on that piece of information, on the calendar as a whole, not just on the start date, correct?
Right.
That's really what everyone looks for.
Everyone wants to start late and end early. That's the one thing is.
That's what we'll vote for right there.
Yeah, so the school committee, you know, votes setting the calendar dates, that is what you guys do every year. And typically, you know, in the past, through negotiations, we've worked with the union, particularly around those late dates. So the contract language has adjusted the last three contracts. Once you get through, really, this year, it's been set going forward, so. You can certainly vote it tonight, or you could, you know, put it off to the next meeting.
What we've seen in the past is it's probably gonna be 50/50 and not much help with regards to informing you. So I think you have a couple of options. One is that if somebody presents an amendment and it's successful, then you can put it off to the next meeting. If somebody, if no amendment's made, or they're made and not passed, then you have the calendar that's been out there, and you could vote tonight. The other thing is you could vote tonight, and you guys can always change it, you know, without changing this, well, well, without changing the start date specifically, you could, if you got feedback on the 2nd and the 12th, that wouldn't be something that would send shockwaves.
Tonight to start before Labor Day and then come back in a couple of weeks and vote to start after Labor Day, we're all. Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Thank you.
Or maybe some of this discussion tonight caused you to want to deliberate for the, you know, think about it yourself.
Is it the will of the committee? I'll make the amendment, or you can just punt.
All right, I will move to amend Mr. McDevitt's motion to approve the pre-Labor Day calendar as presented in the packet with the change of January 12th professional development to January 2nd.
For the purpose of discussion, it's the 2nd.
I think we've already, we have discussed it, thank you.
I mean, for a little bit.
I would just say, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I think that there's, you know, people, you know, have New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and then it's like, okay, now we're back to school. I think changing this tonight, when families have gotten very used to the Friday of Martin Luther King Weekend being a no-school day, I feel like is a pretty good change. There may be families who have already planned that far in advance, so.
That's really good planning. I mean, that's almost a year.
Some people rent houses, or, you know, they, they can do things like that.
I've never been that much of a planner.
So. I feel like that's a curveball.
I get the reasoning, I just, I don't know if it, it's enough to convince me to move it from the 12th. And I just wonder, for professional development's sake, is it, what, I'm struggling with, I'm not sure which day would be better for teacher learning.
We could ask our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Ms. Marks, do you have an opinion on this? No, there's all kinds of pressure. It's after 8:30.
I actually thought it was an interesting idea. I think it's, I think there's merit to it, but do I think one day over another is gonna really impact teacher learning? I don't necessarily feel that way. I think, you know, teachers, teachers who come to professional development, ready to go, are gonna come, whether it's on the 2nd or whether it's on the Friday before Martin Luther King Day, get the right holiday right. Yeah.
For me, it's the movable feast thing. When the first of the year is gonna fall on a different day, and then it's gonna be like a weird long weekend, and when it's the Friday before the long weekend, we always know it's Friday. But when it's the 2nd, it's gonna be, whatever, it's Tuesday this year, it's Thursday next year, it's, it just, it's another thing like Juneteenth and Labor Day, where it's moving and you just have to, like, this is hard, like, we're all having a hard time making a decision on a few things. So for me, keeping that continuity of Friday before MLK is very predictable. It's, you're kind of tired after the holidays. It's not without merit, I just, I like the continuity piece.
Are we ready to vote, then?
So what are we voting on?
On the amended?
The 12th to the 2nd.
Are we voting on just the 12th to the 2nd?
Well, the whole calendar with the 12th moving to the 2nd.
That's, that's what I thought.
Okay, so 12th to the 2nd.
Just the 12th to the 2nd. Okay, Ms. Picard?
No.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
I gotta say, I'm really torn, but I'm gonna go with yes, because it just sounds really appealing as an educator. But I can see both sides, I feel like, okay, so that was?
Three, two.
Three, two.
So you voted yes?
I did.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry. Yes, because I was flipping in my mind, because I do, I, you know, as a teacher selfishly, I think that's a nice transition back.
That was two, three. Sorry, two, three.
Two, three. Right, that makes more sense.
So it failed.
Failed. Okay. So. Such an interesting meeting with all the amendments.
The main motion.
The main motion of pre-Labor Day. I'm torn.
Because I, I don't know which one bothers me more, pre-Labor Day or post, or potentially June 24th. Like, that week's, like, yeah. But the fact of the matter is, like, we don't know the weather. And there could be really bad weather if you start before Labor Day, and we could still be in school on 24th anyway.
Weather in Massachusetts is just a toss-up.
There is a possibility, because there's no guarantee that that would be the day.
I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, it's been between a couple of snow days, a couple of days off, to as high as nine one year during my time here in central office.
Average somewhere around, we've done the math before, I think we've averaged like four or five, like, 4.5, you know, something like that, over like a 10-year period, so.
Yeah, we, I think we bring it every year, and we could certainly get it if you decide to not vote tonight and discuss it, but it's, um.
I know, I know. It's a big turn this year.
Maybe because of the high, I believe, words.
Appreciate.
Well, and I think, didn't, there's been discuss, there's, there's been discussion about, you know, the, like, summer fund and the camps that are local in town that are available for childcare purposes for pre. So it's less of a.
Starts that week of the 24th.
Less of a burden for families.
And there's, you know, approximately 500 athletes, you know, that are starting at the high school, I think it's the week of the 14th, 13th, 14th, somewhere in there, and band is probably another 75-plus that's also starting roughly then, too. So from a high school perspective, those students are in town or very close proximity. And that's, I don't know, roughly half the high school.
Okay, other thoughts? Are we ready to vote? Okay, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Good job. Mr. McDevitt? I meant making a decision. And I will also vote yes. Okay. Wow, that was a lot.
Why was that so hard?
You know, we just want to do the right thing. Okay, that's me, sorry. We are on to new business. We have a first read for school committee supporting for universal school meals.
This is awesome.
Yeah, so in your packet.
Agreed.
You can see, there's the MASC, we've included the letter that came out to all of you, I think you received, along with the bills to do so. I would just let you know that as superintendent, I think this is a terrific idea, and it makes a difference, and it's one less thing folks have to worry about.
It's important to note that both of our state reps have, are cosponsors of the House version of the bill.
And really, I mean, we've heard that our school lunch program is being positively impacted, that it's, all students are gonna have positive outcomes from this if we're able to improve our facilities and make some of those changes that Erica suggested. We know students do better on tests and other assessments, you know, when their bellies are full. And we know that Erica really did a lot to help us get this passed in Massachusetts for this year. So making it permanently universal free lunch and breakfast for students, I think it's just the right thing to do.
You said permanently, but is this going to have to be voted on by the state yearly, or is this, did I miss something in there that it was like in perpetuity, if I can say that correctly? I thought it was gonna have to be yearly, but did you?
The bill doesn't have a date.
As far as.
Yeah.
In my mind, so it would be forever. Wow. Okay. Amazing.
That is fantastic.
Yeah, so this past year, it was included, it has a budgetary item, but this is a, this is different. Yeah.
Okay.
You're not forever, I mean, you can always.
But this is.
Do we have a date that this, like, we need to vote by on this? Are we good in a timeline? If it's a first read now?
So I guess the question is, you know, from a legislator perspective, you know, are we sending something to our local representatives, you know, just of support that, you know, we appreciate them reaching or working towards us and the impact that it has in the community? I mean, would we be drafting a formal letter to accompany this?
I don't know, are we drafting a formal letter? Is that what you're asking?
I'm just not sure what the next motion is, I mean, like, we're not voting at it at the state level.
Make a motion to reach out to our local legislators to ask, to urge their support.
Yeah, just thanking them.
Right, but they need our, they need our support to do that, right? I mean, they're cosponsors, and when they talk to their constituents, and their constituents say, well, like, why are you gonna do universal free lunch? And they'll say, look, you know, this is supported by the school committee, this is supported for these reasons, these are the positive outcomes that we want to do, and they have to justify their votes to their constituents.
So what's the action that we need, is the question, I guess?
Well, I guess that's my question, because this is first reading, there's not, like, we're not voting on this at the state level. So I guess, is our first act, is our first reading that we are?
Excited?
Meeting in support, and perhaps next meeting we'll have a draft letter that we can review?
The letter from the NSAC is urge you to reach out to your local reps and to encourage to support these bills. So I imagine we would have, we should draft something officially proclaiming our support.
Other than sending a letter, there's no action for us.
Superintendent's not gonna assign it to you as homework, you know, perhaps someone.
Mrs. Marks? She could.
Two spaces after a period, I don't care what anyone says. Okay, so I think we're good with item A. We will move on to item B, which is a first read for solar panels. Dr. Millie, do you want to fill us in?
So, yeah, you're gonna get a kind of a sneak peek instead of a first read, because there's a company, Select Energy, that what they provide is the infrastructure, solar panels either on roofs or as canopies over parking lots. And so they have a couple of possibilities for us. The way it works is they install, maintain, pay for all of that, and then they sell the electricity to us at a set rate for a long period of time that's less than we would be paying. So our savings is the delta between what we would be paying for electricity and what we're paying them. And then we don't, there's no cost to us for the infrastructure. So that's the proposal that they want to bring forward. They're working with the town as well for some possible sites. They want to come forward with a presentation that will show what they would look like and the kind of financial picture, what it would be, to the school committee. They just, they didn't quite have enough time to get on this, have the presentation ready for this agenda, so it'll be a first read at the next meeting instead. Exactly, exactly.
Did you read which?
Or we'll find out next time what the sites would be.
So high school and middle school are the most likely, and Sargent are the most likely to offer the kind of electricity produced by solar panels that would make it worthwhile.
And then, maybe in advance of the presentation, what implications or potential barriers are there for the middle school sites with construction potentially happening there starting July 1st?
Yep.
Knock on wood.
Yep, they're aware of that, so they're considering that. Steve Foster and myself have been reaching out to those who have partaken of these opportunities at other school districts and colleges. We are actually on a road trip next Tuesday to Endicott College that has a canopy in place to see how that looks and how that works. So we'll have that.
Snow removal.
Yeah, well, all of that and how it's worked, we'll be talking to the operations manager there to get their feedback. So we'll have more information as well.
I was in Norton two weekends ago, and they have both their middle school and their high school.
Interesting.
So this would be conceivably a town project? I mean, there might be sites in town, you're saying, or other town buildings as well?
Right, so they've identified a couple of town government, like the wastewater treatment facility, maybe, I didn't pay as much attention to theirs as I did to ours, but there's a couple of sites they've identified, and it does require a town meeting approval as well for it to go forward.
Does this have to be an RSP? Like, would it have to go out to bid if we're?
No, it's a state contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was actually gonna ask if the Select Board and us would have to agree on it, but you just answered that. I'm assuming we would both make a recommendation, and then it would go towards town meeting.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right, that's exciting.
Was it parking lots or rooftops?
Both.
Both.
Right, so what they've initially looked at is middle school roof, Sargent roof, and high school parking lot.
So.
I know, I've seen them, I'm just thinking. Footballs and everything else.
So I'm about 10 steps ahead of where we are right now, but most of our elementary schools don't have universal air conditioning. So if we got this, would it have any potential impact on, like, if we can reduce the cost of electricity, could we get air conditioning in our elementary schools? I know I'm like 14 steps, like, I'm five years down the road, but I'm trying to earmark the money right away.
I think that's really interesting, Ms. Picard, like, so I would just be interested in learning more about, like, what were the selection criteria for those three sites that the other ones are lacking? And if we were eyeing that as potential, being in those other locations, like Atkinson and Thompson, because Will Kittredge is gonna get all awesome anyway, would that make them a more viable site?
to get all awesome anyway, would that make them a more viable site as well?
Yeah, and they'll talk about that, but not surprisingly, it has to do with how much sunlight they expect to get. It has to do with the age of the roof, because if it's something that needs to be replaced fairly soon, then it doesn't make sense to be putting something on it. So those are all factors, and they'll explain those.
Great.
Yep.
Phase one, phase two, phase three, depending on.
It could definitely be. It could be that you do something, and then as you're replacing a roof, that's a good site, you do another one. Yep.
Very good. Thank you. That's exciting.
Yep.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Item C is our budget status update.
Dr. Millie?
Not a lot has changed since the last one, when we were about percent and a half over budget. We've picked up another about half percent, and most of that has to do with maintenance. We're in conversations with the town manager. Steve Foster and I work closely where we maxed out our maintenance budget. We've had a ton of HVAC issues this year. And so Steve has picked up some of those, and now he's maxing out his budget. So we're, we're in conversations with the town manager to see how we can maybe convert, transfer some of those expenses out of our budgets and, and have her pick them up so they don't impact our final number for the year. So we'll just keep you up to date on those as we proceed.
Ms. Picard, do you have any questions, or, no? Ms. Vitski? Mr. Hicks?
Where would those maintenance, which lines are those maintenance costs under?
It should be on the district wide.
District wide, thank you.
Yeah.
For system-wide or district-wide?
Maintenance. Do we call it system-wide?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are you good?
You'll see $250,000. And it, it doesn't look like it's maxed out right now, but all of the funds are encumbered.
Got it.
All the additional funds.
Mr. Hicks, are you good?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, you're good. Mr. McDevitt?
Clarifying question, but I'd like to touch, I know we're meeting tomorrow, but just add it to the list tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. That is it for the budget status update. And item 10 is public comment. Come on up. State your name and your address.
This was fascinating, more entertaining than anything I would have done, also, I would have done tonight.
You picked a good one to come to.
TV, nothing like this. This is awesome. Very quick, it's a question, I know this isn't really a Q and A, but let me just make a pitch then. I heard in the whole discussion on the libraries about keyboard instruction, and, and I hope that every student gets that, and it's formal and it's thorough, because I can't think of a skill more important in 2023 than that. So let me just put that out there. If that's already happening, that's great. I just don't, I, I know it didn't used to happen, so hopefully it's happening now. That's it. Thank you.
To adjourn. Second? And a vote, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is adjourned at 9:02. Just a little.